I'd like to call the Thursday, October 13th meeting for the Anderson City Council to order. We will have the invocation by Councilor Lady Davis and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilor Newman.
Please stand. We thank you, dear Lord, for this beautiful day and for all the many blessings you've bestowed upon us. We ask that you be with our residents in our city tonight and be with them in their needs, whether it's small or large. We ask that you be with the people from the southern part of the country where the terrible hurricane come in. And then we ask you guide and direct the council as we go forth with this business before us in your name. Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilor Bell?
Here.
Councilor Cole?
Here.
Councilor Graham?
Councilor Dixon?
I'm here.
Councilor Davis?
Here.
Councilor Stevenson?
Councilor Crum?
Here.
Councilor Newman?
Yes.
President Bibbs?
Here. We have a quorum now for minutes to be approved.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Our move that the minutes be approved of the September 8th, 2016 meeting, please.
A second. Councilor Bell?
Yes.
Councilor Cole?
Yes.
Councilor Dixon?
Yes.
Councilor Davis?
Yes.
Councilor Newman?
Yes.
President Bibbs?
Yes. Minutes have been approved for September 8th. We will now go to Communications, Director Winkler, for Economic Development.
Council President, members of the City Council, a couple of things this evening to share with you. Number one, you have a sheet here where the folks, good folks from NTN, are asking for people that want to see their new plant. We've got a couple of council people already signed up. You've got dates and times. If you would just let me know what works best for your schedule, then I'll make sure that information gets communicated to Tyrone Thompson, who is the new plant manager out there. They're in the process of hiring people, doing interviews now, and they will continue the process of installing equipment for next several months. So it's not going to be an immediate start, but it's just around the corner. That's the first thing. Second thing, I wanted to let you know that the TIF bond that you authorized did successfully sell last week, and it sold. It was rated by Standard and Poor's as an A-minus bond issue. With no tax backup, for just being a TIF bond, that's significant. It sold at an interest rate of 2.79%. Our target was 3%, we beat it. It generated $314,000 in additional funds as far as a bonus because of the bond rating. So the market received it, and it was sold rather quickly. So that's good feedback from the marketplace as far as how we're managing our finances. And last, then, under Communications tonight, you do have the information updated for this month. We're running just a little over 13 leads per month. And if you go back to page five, which totals all the numbers, you're going to see that the return on investment at this point is 100% of the principal over the 10-year period, plus about 47%, a little over 47%. So to put that in the simplest terms, the $46,714,690 that are being invested in these projects is coming back to the TIF, plus an additional $22,850,30 over that 10-year period. So that's the 47% return on top of the principal. Questions or comments? Yes?
With regard to the tour of the NTN plan, I responded for Thursday, October 20th also, but it's not shown here on your list.
I will add you as soon as I walk away from the podium.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
How many people are you scheduling for each meeting?
As many as want to go. The entire council wants to go the first day, that's wonderful. They're not putting a limit on the size. So if everyone wants to go next Thursday, that's great. If it's the Friday, you know, next Friday, that's fine, too.
I'll let you know later on.
Okay.
I'm going to go.
I think you'll be interested in seeing it.
What back are you going out that day to?
Yes, I've scheduled for Sat-- I mean, Thursday at 9 o'clock.
Did you talk to Tammy as the--
No, I haven't.
She was going to go with you.
Oh, okay. I will give her a call.
So just let me know so I can tell them how many people to expect. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Councilwoman?
Yes.
On Gateway's site, the economic development reports, nothing comes up for us. Are there any reports that-- now, the TIF areas are in a separate area, but on the homepage, when you click on Economic Development on the public side, there are no reports for the City of Anderson.
I'll be glad to check with the--
But do you put them on there?
I do not do that, and that would be April Phillips probably in my office. But all the reports that we produce on a monthly basis are on the city website, so I'll be glad to check--
Not the city's gateway?
Yeah, I'll be glad to check with the city controller and find out what we need to do in order to make sure that information is on there.
Okay.
Because, you know, I try to present it to you each month so that you've got it. And we can-- the Redevelopment Commission gets fund balances each month as well, all public meetings. So I'd be glad to share any of that information.
Well, I was just wondering why it wasn't on Gateway?
Yeah, I don't have an answer.
Okay.
I'll check and find out.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now have an overview of the Anderson University streetscape.
Mr. President, members of the council.
City Engineer. A few years ago, Anderson University had a federal earmark to do some improvements around the campus. They approved a section of Fifth Street from College back to the east. There was monies left over from that federal earmark, and NDOT instructed us about a year and a half ago that we had to either spin that federal earmark or lose it. We contacted Anderson University. They said they would like to do an additional project. The project they chose was to do a streetscape improvement on College Avenue from University Boulevard to Fifth Street. That entails removing parking from one side, moving the curbs in a little bit, providing a larger tree lawn area, and then decorative lights. The project is scheduled for the summer of 2018. The City of Anderson has committed $50,000 toward that. Anderson University has committed $100,000 toward that, and there's $560,000 in federal funds toward the project.
Does that pay for the entire project?
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
Where are you getting the $50,000?
The $50,000 would come out of the real tax.
The real tax? Was that in the budget?
In the wheel tax budget.
But, you know, it was? Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We will now have an introduction of ordinance that were tabled with no vote given.
President Bibbs?
Yes, sir.
Introduce ordinance 24-16.
Second.
Second. Ordinance 24-16, and ordinance amending ordinance number 58-90.
Deputy Director.
Thank you, President Bibbs. Councilpeople, this is the ordinance 24-16, which regulates, governs over the amount of rummy yard and garage sales inside city limits. We took it before the Plant Commission. They had some revisions. Said you submitted to you. You had some suggested other revisions. We took it back to the Plant Commission on September 27th. They have since made the revisions that you requested. So the two changes we are making to ordinance 24-16 deals with the spacing or the separation between sales. We had earlier gone from 90 days down to 30 days. We brought it back up to 45 days, which is what the council requested. Second, we increased the overall total number of days that a rummy yard or garage sale can be held in a year. You're currently allowed 12. We have boosted that up to 16 days, and we have returned the number of consecutive days for a rummy yard or garage sale back to three consecutive days. We originally had said four. So we're back to three. So we're staying the same there, but the other two regulations change. Questions?
I have a question. The total days allowed, since it's not to last more than three, why wouldn't we make that day a multiple of three?
You don't have to have three. You can have a one-day run of sale, so they can total 16 over the course of 12 months.
Okay.
Any other questions from the council?
Yeah. What was the reason for the change? I mean, the way it was, what was the reason for the change?
We had some citizens come to us in our office requesting that the rummy sale spacing especially was too strict. They were 90 days apart, and then you got into the colder months, made it difficult to have a sale in the middle of January. So by reducing the spacing, it allows people to concentrate their sales mainly in the spring and summer months and get their total 16 days out of the way before cold weather sets in.
Well, you know, I know people on the poor side of town, like, that's where they pick their clothing, food, a lot of stuff up from rummy sales.
I'm just on the other side of town. I'm one of those people.
You know, I hate to limit when they can buy, when they can have a rummy sale.
Well, this is actually making it better for them.
Making it--
Yeah. Yeah, it's loosening it.
They should have more, that's what I'm saying. Yeah. I guess I'll go for it, but I would like to see an open-ended situation, but we clearly are not going to get that.
Run the sale every day, they need to go get them the business license.
Well, everybody ain't got your money, Donna. Ask some people--
Well, you're the one in business, not me.
Ask some people suffering out here.
Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the audience? Can you get it out? No further questions. Questions being called.
Councilor Bell?
Yes.
Councilor Cole?
Yes.
Councilor Dixon?
No, I think it ought to be open-ended.
Councilor Davis?
Yes.
Councilor Crum?
Yes.
Councilor Newman?
Yes.
And President Bibbs?
Yes, ordinance 24-16 has passed its first reading.
President Bibbs?
Yes, sir.
Introduce 24-16 for its second reading.
Second. Ordinance 24-16, and ordinance amending ordinance number 58-90.
Deputy Director.
Pretty much explained. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
President Bibbs.
Counselor.
How many days did you say? Would you repeat that again? The days they're allowed, that are allowed?
You're allowed three consecutive days to have a sale or less, and as far as a total year, 12 months, you're allowed up to a total of 16.
16 days?
Spaced 45 days apart when you have a sale.
What was your original, your original--
Current regulations are three days at a time, a total of 12 days a year. So we've increased the number to 16, so we've increased it by four days.
Had you had a lot of complaints, or were you getting a lot of complaints?
We get our share of complaints about rummy sales going on constantly or continuously, days on end, weeks on end. That's how we are. We're complaint-driven. If we get complaints about it, we'll go out and address the issue with them, with the people, telling them usually shut down by the end of the day and then wait. Previously, it was 90 days. Now they only have to wait 45 days before they have their next sale.
So how long had they been running, would you say, before someone started complaining?
I'd turn to Mr. Mitchell. He's the one that goes out usually and investigates that. He's the zoning administrator, so he could address that better.
Okay.
I mean, I was the zoning administrator before, but it was all over the place as far as how long people would have their sales before they'd get complaints. Sometimes a lot of neighbors are in on the sale, so they're all benefiting, so it's hard to say.
Hard to say?
Yeah.
Well, all right, I'll ask him. Did you document the complaints and the days that were being complained about? Like, if you had 10 complaints, were they complaining about a five-day sale or a 10-day sale?
Normally, we don't do that. We just, if we get a complaint that somebody's running a constant sale, then usually the people will just admit they are. And if they wouldn't, then, yeah, we would start documenting, all right, you know, and start with the first day that, you know, I went out and got a picture of them running the sale, and we'd have to use that as a starting point. Most of the time, people will admit it, but generally, the two complaints I get are either somebody having a sale every weekend or somebody having a sale for, you know, a week or two weeks at a time.
Oh, okay.
So those are the most common. There've been a couple of cases where, you know, the complaint was that they're always running a sale, so. But, yeah, every weekend is probably the most frequent thing I've heard. And so whenever that happens, then, you know, we become involved, but we don't go looking for it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the council?
Yeah, one other question. If someone need a coat during a restricted time, could we, could I mend this to send him down to Donna's house?
Hey, there's nobody in town loves a good yard sale like I do, so.
All right, thank you.
I'm not knocking it. I only have one a year.
Any other questions?
That gets rid of my junk.
Any questions from the audience? Call for the questions. Questions being called.
Councilor Bell?
Yes.
Councilor Cole?
Yes.
Councilor Dixon?
No.
Councilor Davis?
Yes.
Councilor Crum?
Yes.
Councilor Newman?
Yes.
President Bibbs?
Yes, ordinance 24-16 has passed its second reading.
President Bibbs? I'd like to suspend the rules on 24-16.
Second motion. Councilor Bell?
Yes.
Councilor Cole?
Yes.
Councilor Dixon?
Yes.
Councilor Davis?
Yes.
Councilor Crum?
Yes.
Councilor Newman?
Yes.
President Bibbs?
Is this a personal request of yours?
Did it have to do with you guys want to cheat the people's out of their clothing? So this--
I'm off, I love it.
All right. I'll go along since it's a request from a counselor. Yes.
Rules has to be suspended, your job.
Rules have to be suspended. Our--
All right. President Bibbs?
Yes, sir.
Introduce ordinance 24-16 for its third and final reading.
Second motion. Ordinance 24-16, and ordinance amending ordinance 58-90.
Deputy Director.
I have nothing further. If you have more questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions from the council? From the audience?
Call for the questions.
Questions being called.
Councilor Bell?
Yes.
Councilor Cole?
Yes.
Councilor Dixon?
No.
Councilor Davis?
Yes.
Councilor Crum?
Yes.
Councilor Newman?
Yes.
President Bibbs?
Yes, ordinance 24-16 has passed this council in a waste of consideration of the mayor. Moving on to ordinances with first and second readings approved.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like the 21-16 may given its third and final reading. Ordinance 21-16, and ordinance amending ordinance number 1141, ordinance 2439, and ordinance 36-63 of the City of Anderson, Madison County, Indiana, with respect to a change in the zone map as to certain real estate within the City of Anderson as herein particularly described.
Deputy Director.
Thank you. Just like last month, I'd like permission to piggyback 21-16 and 22-16, both of those ordinances together. As far as discussion, it'll do separate votes, but these two pieces of property are next door to each other. They adjoin or abut each other. This is the property that wraps around the backside and the north side of the Cross Street development. This is the Payless store on Cross Street. It's got a field road here on the right, Cross Street running through the center of the property. The first ordinance, 21-16, is the northern kind of a rectangular-shaped piece of property here to the north of the Payless store. The request is to rezone this from R2 to B4. This came before you last month, received two readings, approved unanimously. It involves nine and a half acres of property. We do have the petitioner, Conrico, which is owner of the ground. They leased the ground or released the building that gets built on the property to Payless. Payless has indicated they would like to expand their store by some, I believe, 30,000 square feet.
Sure.
Proposed expansion. Here's a site plan. This is the Payless store here. Here would be the preliminary layout of a proposed expansion. They're also looking at possibly some retail stores that would extend or front along Cross Street, Cross Street along the top of the page. So initially, building the expanded grocery store, and then a few years down the road, possibly some B shops or commercial shops out towards or facing towards Cross Street. Back to the zone map. The second piece of property, 22-16, involves a little over 44 acres. It's the, I'll call it the lake or the pond area directly west or behind the Payless store here. The request is to rezone this from R2 to B1, and R2 floodway fringe to B1 floodway fringe. Again, this is related to the expansion of the Payless store. This property does adjoin the Payless complex. Payless is zone B4. We're going to a B1 zone class, which is commercial development, which also still allows residential development, so either-or could happen on either of these two properties. Traffic count-wise, on Long Cross Street, you're looking at 11,000 vehicles a day, 15,000 along Scatterfield Road, so go back to the previous one. You're looking at ground that is probably ripe for development in the very near future. Surrounding this property, you have residential zoning to the south, residential to the west, and residential to the north. But again, this, both of these properties are contiguous or adjoining the existing B4 zone class, so it would seem almost, the likely thing to do would be to rezone both of these properties to B1 and B1 floodway fringe. As I said, this was approved by the council, first two readings last month. I'm open to any questions regarding both of these rezonings.
I have a question, President Bibbs. What is a floodway fringe?
Floodway fringe would be the area in our flood plain. Obviously, there's water here, so we have a lake or a pond. Those would be areas that could be built, not the water, but around the shaded or the herringbone shade there. Those would be areas where anything constructed there would have to be built two feet above the base blood profile, so up out of the flood plain.
Oh, okay. Now, is that being considered for a TIF district, or is that just rezoning? Is that--
No.
I'm looking back at Greg, so no.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions from the council? One, I'm sorry.
Well, I think we talked about it on our first reading, but their development or expansion of the grocery store, would that include, or who's going to pay for the improvement of the intersection if that has to occur?
That would be a question for the city engineer. I don't know. Who is here, and maybe he can address that.
That intersection at Cross Street and Alexandria Pike, which is a, I think is currently a four-way stop.
Yes.
If it goes to a, we'd probably have a traffic study done, depending on what goes in there. If they generate enough traffic, they would put in the traffic signal. The developer would.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
When is the expected date of completion?
Regarding the expansion of the grocery store?
Yeah. And how many jobs is anticipated? New jobs?
He's telling me he does not know. It's still in the, on the drawing board, so.
Okay.
In the future, near future.
Well, it's going to be big out there, ain't it?
Eventually. That seems to be the trend anymore with the Kroger, since Payless is Kroger. That's why they're redeveloping a lot of their stores or remodeling them.
Barry Konto's got anything to do with--
I don't believe so anymore. Well, yeah, he'd be the owner of Conrico, one of the owners, so.
That's why you got to ride them electric carts around, because these stores are so big.
Property, not the business.
I have a question.
Yes.
Not for you, but for Mr. Winkler. You say this Kroger's is not in the TIF, but what the other Kroger's is?
Payless. This Payless is not in the TIF, and I know it's owned by Kroger, but the other one is, and it was, the improvements were made with TIF dollars as far as all the infrastructure surrounding that. I'd have to go back and look at the year that that took place. That's, I believe, 2002, 2003?
That's the Main Street store.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
The Main Street store, because they're both owned by Kroger.
Well, they're both Kroger stores.
But they call this Payless.
Different property ownership, I think.
It is?
So, yeah, I think you have different property owners. One, of course, brand, Payless, owned by Kroger.
So they will just be owning the building? They rent the land from someone else?
My understanding is that's correct, but we may have to seek some insight from the owner or the owner's representative.
This is Mr. Jim Douse. He's the architect that does a lot of the Payless. The Main Street store is a Kroger property and store. This, the land, is owned by Conrico, but they are negotiating for Kroger to purchase their parcel.
Okay.
Could you give your name and address, please?
Name is Jim Douse, architect, practice at 227 West 11th here in Anderson.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the audience? Call for the questions. Questions being called.
Councilor Bell?
Yes.
Councilor Cole?
Yes.
Councilor Dixon?
Yes.
Councilor Davis?
Yes.
Councilor Crum?
Yes.
Councilor Newman?
Yes.
President Bibbs?
Yes, ordinance 21-16 has passed its third reading in a waste of consideration of the mayor.
President Bibbs, I'd like to introduce ordinance 22-16.
Second.
Ordinance 22-16, and ordinance amending ordinance number 1141, ordinance number 2439, and ordinance 36-63 of the City of Anderson, Madison County, Indiana, with respect to a change in the zone map as to certain real estate within the City of Anderson as herein particularly described.
Deputy Director.
I see nothing else to add, so I, again, will open up for questions.
Questions from the council? Questions from the audience? Call for the questions. Questions being called.
Councilor Bell?
Yes.
Councilor Cole?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Newman?
Yes.
And President Bibbs?
Yes, ordinance 2216 has passed its third reading and awaits the consideration of the mayor.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to bring forth city ordinance 2316 for the third and final reading, please.
Second.
Ordinance 23-16 and ordinance amending ordinance number 1141, ordinance number 2439, and ordinance 36-63 of the City of Anderson, Madison County, Indiana, with respect to a change in the zone map as to certain real estate within the City of Anderson as herein particularly described.
Deputy Director.
Thank you. Again, just like last month, the area in blue is a single lot that J.D. Byrider, the car lot owns. They own all four of these lots from here to here. The area in blue, though, happens to be zone B3. B3 does not allow J.D. Byrider to expand their car lot, because B3 doesn't allow car lots. So again, we're back before the council to seek third reading of the ordinance, which would change the zoning of this property from B3 to B1, which is the same zoning for the other three lots. So that clears the hurdle, which would then allow J.D. Byrider to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals get approval for their expanded car lot. A little bit of background, just quickly. J.D. Byrider, by getting this rezoned and expanding their car lot, hopes to consolidate their car lot on these four lots. They currently have a detail shop on Alexandria Pike. They're planning, planning to build a large detail shop about where that black box is on the property, about twice that size. And they'll be detailing and cleaning the cars up to put on sale on the front part of the lot. Property is surrounded by business zoning to the north, which is B3. B3 also to the west, B1 across the street, and B1 to the south. It received unanimous approval on first and second reading last month. I'll entertain any questions.
Questions from the council? Questions from the audience?
Questions?
Questions been called.
Counselor Bell?
Yes.
Counselor Colt?
Yes.
Counselor Dixon?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Newman?
Yes.
President Bibbs?
Yes, ordinance 2316 has passed its third reading and awaits the consideration of the mayor. Moving on to introduction of new ordinances.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to request ordinance 2516 be given its first reading.
Second motion. Ordinance 25-16 and ordinance amending ordinance number 1141, ordinance 2439, and ordinance 36-63 of the City of Anderson, Madison County, Indiana, with respect to a change in the zone map as to certain real estate within the City of Anderson as herein particularly described.
Deputy Director.
Thank you. Just like the first rezoning that we dealt with tonight concerning Payless or Kroger, I would like permission to combine ordinance 2516 and 2616. They are quite similar to the Payless situation. They're adjoining properties, they're neighboring properties, they abut each other, they are companion pieces. They went through the Plan Commission the same way, and they were discussed by the Plan Commission jointly. The discussion will be the same for both properties, so it just saves time to combine the two as far as discussion goes into separate votes, if that's all right.
Yes, sir.
The properties affected here are the two in white boxes right here, directly across the street from Lowe's. It's two residences. One property has a single garage, the other has two garages. These are rather deep lots, about 670 feet deep, currently zoned R2, about 280 feet across. The northern lot, which is 3320 Scatterfield Road, contains 4.2 acres. The property to the south is, again, zoned R2 and contains, get my notes correct, 1.84 acres. A petitioner is here asking that both of these properties jointly be rezoned from R2 to B3. B3 is neighborhood shopping center. Anything in a B3 would require Board of Zoning Appeals approval for a special exception, so whatever develops on this property will have to go through a second hearing if the rezoning is approved for any project that would be proposed for either of these two lots. Petitioner's property is surrounded on the north, northwest, and west by property zones either B4, B3, I1, I1, B4. So business development has occurred to the north, to the northeast, I'm sorry, to the northwest and to the west. Surrounding this property to the south and to the southeast and east are residences. All of those properties are zoned R2. I will note that these two properties were involved in a previous rezoning petition 15 years ago before council. It was these two lots plus the three additional lots, so down to about where my pointer is. That block was proposed to be rezoned to B4. Was approved by the Plan Commission, it came to city council, and was denied unanimously. Staff-wise, we would note that with this property, adjoining property already zoned B4, it just seems likely that these two properties would become a B3 or B4 zone class. Staff-wise, we would note there has been considerable development to the north. We feel like it's slowly but surely migrating southward. To the north, you have recent developments such as the Community Health Pavilion, Ford Auto World, the Purdue Polytechnic Building, as well as the Tyler Palina. Lowe's, obviously, has been there a number of years, and Aaron's rent to own. There's a nail place right where the pointer is. To the south, you have Walgreens. You've had the Independent Federal Credit Union go in. Recently, the Plasma Center opened up. Office Depot has been open, and also a Med One also at 38th Street. So you have development to the north and development to the south, so it's almost like the two sides are coming to a meeting point, and the petitioners here would like to sell their property in order for development to occur. Plan Commission-wise, the property to the north, the 2.4 acres, received unanimous approval by a seven to nothing vote. The property to the south received approval by a five to two vote. I will note that we do have a potential developer of the property to the south. The attorney representing the petitioners here, I won't steal his thunder, the potential development was divulged under Plan Commission, meaning I'll let the attorney deal with what the potential development might be. Staff-wise, we are recommending approval of this proposed two rezonings, again, from R2 to B3. The attorney on this project is Mr. Phil Decker. I'll ask him to come up, and both he and I can address any questions that the council might have.
Absolutely.
I have a question. At the last meeting, it was discussed that it's, and you kind of brought that up, that it's going to have to go before the, before the, what is it?
Board of Zoning Appeals.
Yeah, I thought that's what I was going to want to say, because it's not quite the five acres. Do you see that that's going to be any type of problem for them?
No, it's a process they can go through by asking for a variance from the AP requirement.
And then I have a question for you. I got to thinking about this after the Planning Commission. Is there a reason, I'm just curious, is there a reason why, instead of looking at rezoning this and putting it there, you're not looking at the property that's already zoned correctly?
Price.
Okay. That's an easy answer. Thank you.
You say it fell the last time it came before the council?
You were probably, were you still on, you were on the council in 2000?
Absolutely, but what I want to know, what was the remuneration? Who done the remuneration? Who was the protested? Is there any remuneration right now?
Not that I've heard. I did have some people come in after the meeting and inquired, because they had received their letters on time, but they were either out of town or weren't aware of when the meeting was. But that one person, or husband and wife's opinion was, we're tired, we're tired of fighting progress. They realize that progress is going to happen along Scatterfield, and they just resigned themselves to the fact that business, commercial development's going to happen on Scatterfield.
I know. So that was the last, last year when it fell?
This was when the Plan Commission addressed it last month.
Last month?
As to why it was turned down by council in 2000, I would only be guessing. If I believe right, I think what was up for discussion was a large area that I'm outlining with my pointer that was up for rezoning, and it was two separate petitions, these four or five lots and these four or five lots. Council decided that, well, we'll let the northern portion see if it develops, and once it develops, we'll let you, let the petitioners come back and refile and seek to get this rezoned. So they kind of split the baby in half, gave the north half the okay to proceed with development, and rejected the southern half.
See, the reason, the reason I asked, you know, like, I didn't see, what, over 25 years, about a thousand of them, so I can't remember all the particulars in each situation. Now, you say proper notification has went out?
Sure, yes.
Okay. Well, we can't do but two readings anyway.
Where is 38th Street at?
Down, down south?
Down, right there.
From, from this area?
South, the bottom of the page.
Where you're at?
It's not in that, it's not in that other picture.
It's about five blocks south.
Five blocks south of 38th Street, so I'd be over in your district.
No, this is in your. 38th Street is five blocks south of this proposed rezoning.
Well, how, so that I can get my brain wrapped around it. Where is it by Plant 20?
It's right across the street from.
It would be west of Plant 20.
From Lowe's, from Lowe's.
Oh, from Lowe's?
Yeah.
Oh, that is, that's north of 38th.
Here's Lowe's.
That's north of 38th.
Yeah. 38th Street is along the bottom down here, five blocks south.
It's where office supply is, and.
That would also be to the south.
Yeah. There's a kid care, daycare. Oh, I bet the reason why we turned it down, because there's so much residential in that area.
Yeah, we had some.
Pretty simple we didn't get down. Between me and you.
I would imagine there's residents there now that this progression of business, you know, residential to business zoning increases the value of their property.
This, this offer is, the, both those houses have been on and off the market for over a couple of years. The, the house that's actually selling, the, yes, the southern one, it was in a trust, and both of the beneficiaries of the trusts are now dead, and they've been trying to sell it out of an estate for two years as a residential property. No offers. The other property, McKenzie, which is north, she's an elderly lady. It's time for her to, to move on. Again, she's tried to sell the property as a resident, and it hadn't happened.
Wait a minute.
Wait a minute, do you know what you just said?
Why, you need to.
Mrs. Davis.
You need to read the vine.
One of the things you have to remember is that we're going to have to take this to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Where is Morningside Drive at? Show me that. Right there. Now, that's not all residential in that area? Is it not?
It is.
Damn, and before we go into further.
This wouldn't be spot zoning?
It adjoins property zone B4, property zone B3, property zone B4.
And that's where the, the old Phillips 66 station used to be.
It's a Leaven, Leaven.
Nail place now.
Nail place.
Well, if the neighbors didn't come and complain, they, they should have been here tonight, you know?
Maybe they are here, I don't know.
Well, I, I want, a thing I need to say, like, is the person, the older person being kicked out of a home for, has she been properly notified? And when you say move on, is that mean she's going to a nursing home?
She is a petitioner.
You got to mean the terminating, I mean, I need to know what move on means.
Mrs. McKenzie hired me to get it rezoned. She's not.
You said, you said move on.
She's not being kicked out at all.
Well, what does move on, what does move on mean?
Well, I think it means nursing home.
Okay, well.
I mean, I, I don't ask a lot of questions of somebody who's approaching 90.
Oh, no you don't.
I'm sorry.
I ain't too far off, but.
I did, I did talk to Bertha McKenzie.
Me and Donna, we hitting on heaven's door.
Don't say nothing about my age, you worry about yours.
Ollie, Ollie, I did talk to Bertha McKenzie, she lives there.
Okay.
She has a little bell on her driveway. I happened to step on it, she stepped outside when I was there. And she said, well, she's lived there 40 years, and I said, well, you anxious to leave? She said, well, let's just say it's time. I said, well, aren't you just wanting to get away maybe from the noise? She says, no, I've grown to, it's just part of life. But she said, well, if I got to have to move, I have to move. But it's been her house for 40 years, so I'm sure there's some connection there with her.
Is Mr. Headliner zoned?
Yes, he would be in the B4 zoning.
What's that, what's her address?
Mrs. McKenzie is 3320.
Any other questions from the council?
Is there, are you revealing, excuse me, revealing the plans or the purchaser of the property tonight?
Not at this point in time, but they're being prepared. That'll be the next step. After this is rezoned, then we have to immediately file for approval to the Board of Zoning Appeals. At that point in time, Anderson's going to be probably pretty aggressive, especially with the eastern border. I don't know so much about the south at this point in time, but all of this has to be viewed, the plans and that sort of thing. What will go on that property, I'm at liberty to tell you. First of all, it'll, it's going to be a paint store, a retail paint store. It's going to be a single user. It'll be a building between 4,000 and 4,500 square feet. Other than that, that, at this point in time, that's all I can tell you.
And then regarding.
Access road?
I'm sorry, what man?
What would you do for an access road?
We're going to have to come in, there's a driveway there now, and you'll have to be headed north, because that's a divided highway there, basically. And you'll have to turn right in, and then, I don't know how they'll do inside internally, and then you'll have to come out the same way. There'll be no increase or traffic release to the east, which is the neighborhood side, which was talked about here earlier. And plus, you know, there's going to be a fence or some, a green wall there. I mean, we know it. We know it's coming. I mean, that's what your Board of Zoning Appeals does.
That was, that was my question, is are we going to do something to protect the sanctity of the residents?
They normally do when you come in in this type of situation.
Okay.
One other thing I might point out is, being a retail point, well, paint store, we're really not going to have a lot of traffic, but the traffic that's coming to Scatterfield is just warming up when you get that Community Health Pavilion open and some of the other stuff that's being built out there with Purdue, and, you know, we're really not going to be a big impact there. I mean, you know, how many people go in and buy paint in a day, or a paint sprayer, or whatever they, they sell, a ladder? I mean, you know, and then across the street, all the ingress and egress, they've got cross drives coming out of Lowe's. You know, we're just going to be kind of there. So, whatever.
Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the audience?
Question?
Question's been called.
Counselor Bell?
Yes.
Counselor Colt?
Yes.
Counselor Dixon?
Well, we are only going to give it two reads anyway, so I got time to talk to. I'll say yes for now, I may change my mind.
Counselor Davis?
I will say yes for now, only.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Newman?
Yes.
President Bibbs?
Yes, ordinance 2516 has passed its first reading.
Are we going to do two tonight?
It's, it's up to the will of the council.
Ah, let's just do one.
Okay.
Yeah, let's just do one on that.
Yeah, because we all need to go out and look at that. What you need to do, you need to go look out, look at that. There is a reason why the council turned it down. The council hardly ever turns any business thing.
That's right.
So there's got to be a reason unless you go out and look at it. But I don't understand why the residents are not up here opposing it.
I know.
So if there is not a problem.
They may not be opposing it, because they may not be opposed to it.
They may not be opposed to it, that's right.
It may help them sell or develop their properties.
This gives us an opportunity for them to come in if they are opposed to it. Let's just move on with that.
Moving on.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to ask the council to give ordinance 2616 its first reading, please.
Second.
Ordinance 26-16 and ordinance amending ordinance number 1141, ordinance 2439, and ordinance 36-63 of the City of Anderson, Madison County, Indiana, with respect to a change in the zone map as to certain real estate within the City of Anderson as herein particularly described.
Deputy Director.
Thank you. Only thing maybe additionally to add, I would say that both of these lots are heavily wooded, especially as you go east on the property. So as you get back here, it's pretty thick as far as woods and forest area. The cleared, the clear area would be up towards the front where the house, houses are and the garages are. But it's pretty, pretty thick, pretty green towards the back, so there's currently an existing buffer between the residences and any proposed development that would occur. Open for questions.
Questions from the council?
What, what size did you say that building was again?
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
What, what size did you say that building was gonna be again?
4,000, 4,500 square feet. I imagine it, and I'm guessing here, I imagine it'll be toward the front as your ordinances allow because it's, that's where the action is and the people drive by. Probably be some parking in back. Um, that's a large lot. Um, you know, what's the paint store? It's a box.
Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the audience?
Go ahead with the questions.
Question's been called.
Council Belle?
Yes.
Council Culp?
Yes.
Council Dixon?
Yes.
Council Davis?
Yes.
Council Krum?
Yes.
Council Newman?
Yes.
President Bibbs?
Yes, ordinance 2616 has passed its first reading.
Just give one reading.
Yep.
President Bibbs?
Yes, sir.
Uh, introduce 3116 for his first reading.
Second motion. Ordinance 31-16 and ordinance amending ordinance 1141, ordinance 2439, and ordinance 36-63 of the City of Anderson, Madison County, Indiana, with respect to a change in the zone map as to certain real estate within the City of Anderson as herein particularly described.
Deputy Director?
Thank you. The ordinance 3116 is the property on the wall that is outlined in white. A lot of us should recognize this in that, this is 38th Street, West 38th Street across the top. This is the site of what I know as the Vocational School or the Ebert Center, I believe now it's called the District 26 Career Center. Been there for a number of years. Piece of property is zoned R2. We were approached by the petitioner, Anderson Community Schools, and the Jane Polly, um, Community Health Center, uh, about a proposed dental clinic that would go on the backside of this building. Uh, when we discovered the property was zoned R2 and checked our records, clinics are not allowed to go on properties zoned R2, they can go on properties zoned R3 or R4. So, we had to make a minor adjustment or, uh, tell the petitioner they need to make some type of rezoning change to bring this into the proper zone class for a clinic to be located on the backside of the building. They filed the proper petition, it did go through the Plan Commission, it did pass unanimously. We had a number of certified letters, as you can see, from the number of houses. The certification requirement is 300 feet out from the edge of the property, so a number of letters went out. We had a number of phone calls from people, what are they doing with the vocational school? And we had to explain, there's really nothing happening. R4, the proposed rezoning class, would allow for single-family homes, duplexes, and apartments. We assured the people there are no plans to do any of that. Uh, the main reason to get to the R4 zone class is that's the proper zone class for a dental clinic. Um, and that's the way we explained it. There were, are there a few people, Michael, at the Plan Commission? I don't believe so. Please. Greg? Was there, were there any remonstrance? I don't recall any.
I'm not aware.
Yeah. Um, so that's the reason we're here, is to put this in the proper zone class so that the Jane Polly organization can move forward with plans to eventually go to our Board of Zoning Appeals, ask for a special exception to put the, put the dental clinic roughly in this location here. Uh, the dental clinic, my understanding, will serve the underinsured and the uninsured of our community. Um, there is a need for this type of clinic, so they're just going through the proper steps in order to get things all lined up so that it can do it legally. Um, can't think of anything else, I'm, I'm open to questions.
Questions from the council?
You say this is a dental clinic. Now, doesn't Madison County Health Center have a dental clinic also for the low income and, um?
I believe so, correct.
Well, this is why I have a lot of questions about what Jane Polly is doing. We, we're duplicating these services, and Anderson is not gonna be able to support both of these large facilities, uh, um, that's, they, they're getting the same pool of people. So, I don't know what kind of studies or what kind of data you have on who they service, but they're servicing the same type of people, 'cause I have had complaints about, uh, one of the organizations telling people to go to Jane Polly, some telling them to go to the Madison County Health Center. I would like to see these people work together and not try to put each other out of business. So, with that in mind, I, I can't support this dental clinic because they already got a dental clinic that's not filled. And Donna, did you, what's up you wanna ask?
I think, if I remember correctly, I think she, if you wanna come up here and-
I'll let her fill, fill everybody in on the, there's an educational aspect.
Oh, teaching, well, that's different. I just thought it was gonna be a dental-
Educational aspects to the-
Dental clinic attached to the class. Correct. Well, that's, that makes a difference.
My name's Kim Nuland, I'm the Director of Operations for the Jane Polly Community Health Centers. Um, our offices are at 1503 North Mit Hoffer in Indianapolis. Um, I'll leave my card, so.
Well, the question I have is, I was very excited when our Madison County Community Health Center opened, and it's had some problems. But now we have the Jane Polly Center, which I know is highly recognized. But what data or what made you wanna come here knowing that we already had these facilities set up?
Absolutely. Um, when the Jane Polly Community Health Centers petitioned, um, HERSA, which is the branch of the federal government that dictates fairly qualified health centers, we have to do a survey of potential underserved consumers in the community. And at the time that we entered that petition, which was about two years ago, it was found that there are around 40,000 underserved people in Madison County, and around 10,000 of those people were presently being served in a health center. So, um, HERSA looks at those statistics, um, understands those, um, folks that are below 200% below, or 200% of the poverty level or below, um, and look at saturation. They consider saturation as 65% of those persons that fall into that category as being full service in a community. Roughly 25% of those people were being served. And so, HERSA deemed this area as needing services for underserved in addition to those that were already present. Um, we began our work in this community at, um, the Community Hospital, POB, and we have a primary care clinic, OB gynecology, and pediatrics at that site. Uh, we were approached by Anderson Community Schools about the project at D26. They want to incorporate an educational opportunity in a real live dental clinic for young people that wish to explore becoming dental assistants. Uh, we've worked with the IU School of Dentistry on educational opportunities at an existing clinic that we have at the Walker Career Center, which is a very similar venue to D26. Um, we've been at Walker Career Center for about four years now. So, we saw this as a great opportunity to be able to serve the community and also to be able to serve the educational needs of the community and hopefully find people that have a passion for the kind of work we do and that want to do that as they enter into their careers.
I understand everything you're saying, and I support that 100%. My concern is the two health clinics that are doing the same thing. Now, does Ivy Tech have a dental school? I understand, I think so.
I have not worked with Ivy Tech, so I don't know that firsthand. I know that-
They do.
D26 is, is, um, the folks that we've been dealing with.
They, they have a dental school, I'm, I'm pretty sure they do, 'cause I've had people tell me they, they used to have one, I'm not sure. But the complaints, not complaints, but the concerns that I'm, I'm getting are from low-income people that may be at different service areas, and they're being told at maybe one area to go to your facility, and then other areas may be still referring them to the health clinic. I'm concerned about the viability of both clinics surviving. Uh, I know, so I was just wondering, what data, what information? Have you talked with Mr. Malone over the health clinic to see what you're duplicating, or if you're using people out, servicing the same people out of the same pool, or?
Um, there, there is a, a lot of great historic data for more than one federally qualified, federally qualified health center to be in a community. Um, there are seven in the city of Indianapolis. The population density certainly is not the same as, as it is here, but we have a history of cooperation between FQHCs in communities. Our only concern is to make sure that people are served. Um, it's not to be competitive, it's not to own a market. We're not retailers, we are in the business of serving and serving with a mission. So, we're very happy to work with any other provider in the area. Um, we know that the need is great and that no one person can own the need. As long as people need services, we will be here. If the day comes when our services aren't needed, we will not be here. We're only here to serve.
Oh, I understand that. Uh, has anyone from your organization spoke or met with, uh, the Director of the Madison County Health Center?
We have reached out to Mr. Malone many times. In fact, before we did a petition to HERSA to come into this area, we reached out to Mr. Malone and asked a partner with him. Um, this wasn't something he was interested in at the time, but we're always open to that.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm gonna further investigate and see what's going on because I, I really, we, we really want the people to be serviced, and I wanna make sure that we are not, uh, duplicating services that we already have, so we won't be sitting here looking at a bunch of other empty buildings because, uh, of over saturating, uh-
Dental services is something that's, that can be very unique. Even people that have insurance coverage often don't have dental coverage, and so going to a retail dental area might be impossible for them. Whereas at a federally qualified health center, on a sliding fee scale, they may have a single nominal fee that they pay for hundreds of dollars' worth of service. Um, we are, um, we are only looking at four chairs, it's not a very large center, and it really is being developed so that we can teach people, people to serve this community in the future and also serve the need that's here presently.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
What, um, age or grade will you start this training for?
Um, it is a program by D26. It is not Jane Polly's program, it's a D26-owned.
What grade?
I believe it's high school age children, and I think they do have some adult education that is not a well-formed program yet. Um, but part of our agreement of being within that school is that we will vacate the space one day a week, and it would purely be used for the pleasure of D26 to educate those kids. I think it's great to get more education out there, but this-
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Does the one by Anderson, the old Anderson High School offices, do they offer the same thing as this one does?
And where are the old Anderson High School offices?
There's two Jane Polly.
Oh, the Wigwam. That isn't, that's a separate project. Um, Jane Polly Community Health Centers is gonna be bringing a primary care clinic into that Wigwam facility. Um, they have done demonstration, or demolition on the area, and we're gonna be getting to be built. That is not gonna be dental services, that's gonna be primary care and behavioral health services.
And your services are by sliding scale, right?
Um, for those who are uninsured, we go by a sliding fee scale that's based on household income, and, um, the scale goes from 100% slide down to 80% slide, parameters set for us by the federal government on a yearly basis.
And, uh, present day? I think it's really interesting that you would have a school. Um, I know, I don't know if anybody's had to have a tooth pole lately, they just don't do it anymore, you know?
I had a tooth pole.
They wanna, they, you have your teeth filled if you have insurance. But let me tell you, if you have a tooth pole today in one of these businesses around town, it is very expensive. My boy had, I'll just tell you one example. My boy had a tooth pole and it was one of these "it's killing me today" type pain. Cost me $600. He didn't have no money. Cost $600 to have one tooth pulled. When you used to, you'd get one pulled for 40 bucks, or 20 bucks, you know, that's a long time ago. But there is a need for your services, and there's a need for more than one business to be in town. That was your, it's federal money, right, is what we're talking about.
FQHCs are not meant to commute, to, to compete, we're meant to complement each other. Um, where services are needed to provide services, and as I said, um, if we can't be viable and sustainable, the federal government will not support our business model, and we will not be able to serve patients. Um, so, we're, we're here as long as we're needed. Um, I work in the kind of career that I hope I can work myself out of my career. It hasn't happened yet, so we keep going on the mission.
President Bibbs?
Yes.
I just wanna make it clear that the, uh, I believe Ivy Tech has a dental school and you can get services for low cost.
They only clean your teeth.
Is that all they do? And also the Madison County Health Center?
Or they, they look at your mouth.
Uh, they treat patients on a sliding scale. They do exactly really the same thing.
Same thing, same thing, same program.
Yes, it's absolutely a complementary model.
But I'm gonna, um, until I can get more information, because I'm getting different information than what, you know, what I'm hearing here today. But I wanna get to the bottom of this, so I can make sure when I vote that we're doing justice for our city and not just for something that sounds good. I know this sounds beautiful and everything, but I'm hearing that it's gonna be hard to support both of these facilities once you get all your programs up and running, somebody gonna be shut down. But I'm gonna do some further research and try to get to the bottom and talk to your people and over there with-
The, the council has my card, would you like my business card?
Yes, I would, thank you.
I'm happy to.
I'm only giving it one reading.
Okay, well then. Yes, I still like your card.
If you need any, any future information, please let me, I'm happy to help.
Okay, thank you.
One other thing, uh, south, uh, west of that school, that complex, is that, uh, the dentistry in there, is that private owned, or?
Yeah.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, the-
Where, where is that located on the map?
I did not point that out earlier. This is Zone B5, which is professional office district. You have a number of dentists, doctors, chiropractors, uh, in this section here, so that is B5.
That's private business, okay. Okay, we're gonna give it one reading.
Yeah, the question from the council, from the audience. Question, question's been called.
Council Belle?
Yes.
Council Culp?
Yes.
Council Dixon?
Uh, my vote could change, but I'm gonna vote no right now.
Council Davis?
Yes.
Council Krum?
No.
Council Newman?
Yes.
President Bibbs?
Yes, ordinance 3116 has passed its first reading.
Let's move on, we don't wanna give anymore.
Sir President?
Yes.
I'd like to have 38-16 be given its reading, first reading.
Second.
And ordinance designated in the economic development target area for Scott Arnold.
Director Winkler.
Council President, thank you, members of the city council. Um, it's my pleasure to bring this request before you for a residential abatement. It is an infill abatement. We haven't done very many of those in the last five years, so I'm actually pretty excited about this. Um, this particular abatement is a residential abatement, and it would combine lots 49, 50, 51, and 52, an Eastland addition, second, the second continuation at 2924 East 6th Street. The improvements to the property are estimated at $300,000. Um, the request is for a six-year tax abatement. It is considered infill housing, thus the six-year as opposed to the standard three-year. Construction will commence before December 31st, 2016, for a single-family dwelling intended for human habitation. The area has, been unimproved, uh, the area has unimproved lots, you were seeing four of them before you, and has been undesirable for normal development and occupancy due to a cessation of residential growth. The project will certainly promote municipal development and all of the objectives therefore, um, including increasing the property prices, uh, in that particular neighborhood. I do have Mr. Arnold here, uh, with me tonight, who will be glad to answer any questions. But, um, as I did point out, this is an infill project where we're closing the gap in an existing neighborhood, which makes it particularly attractive for economic development.
I, President Bibbs, I have a question for you.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Winkler.
Yes, ma'am.
Explain infill-
The difference?
Abatement, yes.
Well, there's a, there's a clause in the statute, um, that's referenced in this resolution that allows for infill. Infill being defined as a, a gap in an existing neighborhood, usually inner city, um, where it's surrounded by housing.
Inner city.
Inner city. That this would be considered, uh, you know, part of the inner city of Anderson. You've got an area that's surrounded by housing where all the other areas around it have developed successfully, and you have empty lots.
Where is this exactly?
This is East Sixth Street.
I mean, what's surrounded? I can't picture.
Several months back, we actually vacated that area right there.
Okay, back over in there, okay.
So, right off of East Sixth Street. So, it's going to be just north of Sixth Street, south, of course, of Seventh Street and...
It's, see that, see that, that's the back of 10th Street.
There you go.
Yeah, I understand now. We looked at that area.
That's correct.
But this infill abatement is, the difference was I lost my train of...
The difference is it allows for six years, so...
And why would we be doing that?
Because this is a significant investment and it closes the gap in that neighborhood.
So, how much money are we talking about?
It finishes that neighborhood. Well, I thought you might ask that. What we're looking at at this point is a six-year abatement, which would start at 100%, then it would drop to 83.4, then 66.8, 50.2, 33.6, and then 17%.
I have all that. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the investment and how many homes and... One home for a six-year abatement?
Yes, ma'am.
Total cost is how many, 300,000, you're saying?
300,000, yes.
Well, I'm glad you're building a home. Thank you for, like Greg not here, so I'll thank you. Thank you for investing. He always does that. But I'm not getting, why are we doing a six-year? Because of the cost or?
No, ma'am. Because we're closing the gap in a neighborhood. We have an area that hasn't developed over a long period of time. The other lots have all developed around it. So, you have a smile with a missing tooth, if you will, to use the analogy before.
Excuse me for interrupting, but we, I went out there.
No, please.
Is this the only $300,000? I don't remember seeing any $300,000 homes out there. Do you, Councilor Bibbs? I know you're going to develop it, but is this going to be the only one out there?
Ma'am, there's ranch-style homes in the neighborhood.
Right, but they're not...
And I'm just planning on building one to similar match. It's going to be 2,200 square foot house with a garage on it and then another garage off by itself is all I'm wanting to build.
Oh, okay, and that's going to be about 300,000? But the...
Plus a asphalt driveway and all.
And all that. What's the average cost of the homes around there?
I guess probably around 85.
85?
I'd say the one across the street, they're owned by...
Albrook?
Yeah.
Arlen. That his lot is a double lot with also a second building on it that matches his house. And I would say it's probably an excess of 200,000.
Oh, okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Isn't this backfill part of the city ordinance to retain the six-year tax abatement for infill?
For infill projects, yes. Yes. So, your total cost on a $300,000 house, you know, I've worked it out roughly over that six years, it will save this gentleman about $10,000. But you have properties there that are empty lots now that are going to be worth considerably more with that $300,000 house on it. So, taxpayers get their money back pretty quick. And it improves the property values in that neighborhood, which...
Which one of those...
I would see that as being important.
It is important. President Bibbs addressed Mr. Winkler.
Yes.
I'm for his project, but I want to ask you something that...
Sure.
This may not be in the statute. I don't know how you're doing these abatements, but to come inside the city more, a lot of these abatements are on the outer skirts of the city. Do abatements have to apply to new homes only? What, I've had residents, homeowners ask me, why are we giving out so many abatements? Why don't we give abatements to homeowners who...
We have rehabilitation on.
Who want to, I know for the senior citizens.
To rehabilitate or add on to your house? We have a...
Okay, well, to fix up their homes. Do they qualify for abatements? What would that be?
Well, Senator Lannan can help answer this with some definition.
Okay.
My understanding of the residential abatement is that it does need to be new construction.
Yeah.
Now, that would not necessarily mean a new house. It could mean that you're adding a room. But it does require new construction.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. But I'm hearing from homeowners now that are following these abatements now. I don't know if something can be written up, but for someone who wants to stay inside the city, because a lot of people, a lot of these neighborhoods that we've forgotten about and trying to throw away, a lot of people want to live where they're at.
Yes.
And they want to do repairs on their homes. If they could get a couple of years' abatement and take that money and put into their home, I don't know. I guess I could ask Attorney Lannan about that.
Mr. President?
Yes.
That's something different, though.
Along with this idea of a backfill lot, a person buys a lot. Hypothetically, situation with an abandoned or reconstructed house. They come up to one of these offices and they fill out the paperwork before they hit the hammer, hammer to it. And they will have to have their receipts or an estimated cost of the rehab. If it's a substantial cost, then they'll get qualified for a tax abatement. This was under the previous administration, under Mark Lawler's administration. But no one never kept it up.
Okay, well, I don't want to hold him up.
Now, wait a second. Where the idea came from, I got to put the burden on my wife. When we redid Family Homestead there on Sherman Street, we dumped quite a bit of money on there and I wish we would have had this city ordinance on the books in because we would have qualified for a three-year tax abatement.
Well, that's exactly what I'm talking about. There are homeowners that, but this has nothing to do with y'all right now, so...
Your point is appreciated.
Okay, well, thank you.
Councilwoman Crumes, Sheila said she would get you the rehabilitation tax abatement.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we can carry on.
And you can read what they have to do. I do think you have to add more footage on your home or you have to, like Tim said, you have to do something constructive to the house. This is not decorating inside. You have to add on, I believe.
Okay.
And that was done under Mark Lawler, like you said.
Thank you.
And I'm not so sure it wasn't me complaining that got that one done.
Any other questions for Mr. Arnold?
Lot of history behind me.
Any other questions?
Questions from the council? Questions from the audience?
Call for the question.
Question's been called.
Councilor Bell?
Yes.
Councilor Culpe?
Yes.
Councilor Dixon?
I don't want to all of them. At this time, I'm going to vote yes. It may change. I don't want to give a one reading.
Councilor Davis?
Yes.
Councilor Crumes?
Yes.
Councilor Newman?
Yes.
President Bibbs?
Yes. Ordinance 3816 has passed its first reading.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to give Ordinance 38-16 its second reading.
Second.
Ordinance 38-16, an ordinance designating the economic development target area for Scott Arnold. She made a motion to give it a second.
Who's supposed to second it?
Yes, sir.
You did?
Deputy Director.
Yeah, second.
Same project, here to answer questions.
Scott, are you going to live in the home?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Welcome to the area.
I actually live on East Ninth Street. Now, I have for 22 years.
Oh, good, okay.
How many square feet do you have in that?
2,200, ma'am. Three-bedroom, too bad.
You've been here in Anderson for...
Bigger than what I got.
Well, I'm 47 and I've been here since I was 15.
You're going to have it built or you're going to build it?
No, I'm having it built.
Questions from the council? Questions from the audience?
Question.
Question's been called.
Councilor Bell?
Yes.
Councilor Culpe?
Yes.
Councilor Dixon?
Yes.
Councilor Davis?
Yes.
Councilor Crumes?
Yes.
Councilor Newman?
Yes.
President Bibbs?
Yes. Ordinance 3816 has passed its second reading. It does fit the requirements for suspension of rules, but as always, it's up to the council's discretion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Request of suspension of rules regarding Ordinance 3816.
Second motion.
Councilor Bell?
Yes.
Councilor Culpe?
Yes.
Councilor Dixon?
No.
Councilor Davis?
Oh, that ends it right there.
I know.
Moving on to...
I'll need to get your vote.
Moving on to introduction of resolutions.
President Bibbs, I'd like to introduce 2616.
I can't wait it's over.
Second.
Board's first reading.
Resolution 26-16, a preliminary declaratory resolution fixing a date, time, and place for a public hearing thereon for Michael P. Jackson.
Yes, Director Winkler.
Council President, members of the City Council, I have before you the request to set the public hearing date for a commercial abatement. And I have before you the petitioner tonight, Mr. Jackson. He is in the process of purchasing the former Peyton Wells, a portion of Peyton Wells on the north side of Anderson, approximately 2.65 acres. It's been for sale since 2007. In addition to the land and the building, he'll be making significant improvements to the building. So, by the time you look at the value of the property, the existing building and the improvements, it'll be in excess of $700,000. What we are asking for is a three-year real property abatement on everything. The logic behind this is pretty simple. This man is going to double the value of the property. So, even in giving him an abatement for three years, starting out at 100%, dropping down to 66 and then to 33, you are even by the time he pays his spring taxes in the fourth year. You've gotten all your money back that you would have had if you didn't do this project. And if you look at it over six years, the taxpayers are $72,000 ahead. He's going to create an additional six jobs and an additional payroll, I believe, of $210,000. So, you know, as you've mentioned, Councilwoman Crumes, when it comes to North Anderson, we don't have tiff. The only thing that we have, the only tool that we have to work with in order to help someone that's growing their business is abatement. And that's the logic behind my supporting this request. Mr. Jackson is here if you have any questions.
What are you putting out there?
Indiana flooring, carpet, wall. We're currently uptown on 14th Street.
You're going to utilize the entire building out there, too?
The building that we purchased, which is the one on Schatfield.
Yeah.
We're going to develop the entire building. We are already worried that we may fill it up faster than we thought.
Good luck.
Our building is about half the size we need right now, so...
I'll be up for us.
And we think, Mr. Jackson might not share this with you, but we think there may be a buyer for the store downtown, so...
Yeah, we do have a...
An interested party.
Oh, that's your store right downtown there, too, right now.
Yeah, next Barron's Paints Lot work.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Winkler and Mr. Jackson, you say you may have six employees. What positions would this be?
I've already hired five of them.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, the new employees. I've already hired five new employees and two of them have already started working. We have an outside salesperson, two inside salespeople, and an extra trainee in the installation.
Okay. Well, what I want to say is, this is, you know, I'm elected official. The feedback I get from the community is when we're giving out these abatements, we want to make sure that we're equal-opportunity employers. So, when they hear about jobs and the first thing they want to know is, how do they apply or what's open? But since you've already hired, I just wanted to know, do you have any minorities working at that facility? Because when we give out these tax abatements, you remember these, this is property tax owners and we make up all kinds of people within the city. And when they see these new businesses open and they go to patronize those businesses and they don't see any minorities or anybody that looks like them, they want to know why are we giving abatements if we don't get a chance to work at these places?
Do you, as a female minority?
Yes.
And I probably have 20% of my people are minorities.
Okay, well, that's women. Okay, well, that's good.
Hispanic and African-American both working, all hired in the last year and...
I just ask because they ask me, you know?
I'm glad to tell you, we're happy.
Well, I'm happy, too. Good job.
And I can honestly tell you, I don't think we're done hiring.
Well, hopefully not.
Just because I hired these, this is kind of an immediate need and so I believe there's more to happen, although on a slower pace.
Okay, thank you.
And a question from the council? Question from the audience?
Question.
Question's been called.
Councilor Bell?
Yes.
Councilor Culpe?
Yes.
Councilor Dixon?
Yes.
Councilor Davis?
Yes.
Councilor Crumes?
Yes.
Councilor Newman?
Yes.
President Bibbs?
Yes. Resolution 2616 has passed this council and awaits consideration of the mayor.
I make a motion that way of your own.
Say it.
Meeting adjourned.
Eight, 26.
Why wouldn't you give a guy a third reading?
Got a lot to sign.
Not too bad.